While we were in them. Thank you, thank, I forgot to mention that we need to record this meeting. And I remember at that time Toastmasters was one of those organizations that pivoted quickly to go into online meetings. We were really pretty much the pioneer of the industries. People had to learn from us how to run effective online meetings. And while we were there, obviously, everyone was asking themselves, now, how are we going to run our contest? And at that time, Toastmasters made a ruling that, yes, we all contests from club level up to district level, even international level, will be held online. That was in 2020. So the 2020, 2020 contest was held online. 2021 was also handled online. 2022 was also held online. In 2023, Toastmasters said, yes, we can continue holding our contests online. However, we are open to having in-person contests. And it was up to the districts to take the decision to say, are we going to, or the district council to take a decision to say, are we going to hold our contest online or in person? And at that time, District 74 District Council, through the advice of the executive, to get the decision to continue with online contest. And in 2023, I think I'm messing up my years now, in 2023, our contest was held, our contests were held online. However, when we went to the district contest, it was held in person. Now, Toastmasters did give us a, I won't call it a warning, but let's call it, they gave us a heads up that in 2025, the all contests will be held in person. And that was adequately communicated through our then PQDs who are now District 129 and District 74 as district directors. They communicated it adequately during the month of January, February, and March. I remember them sending posters to say in 2025, the contest will be in person. Now, during the convention, which was held in August, Toastmasters did make that announcement that all contests will be held in person. However, over and above that, Toastmasters introduced a different category contest or a different type of contest, which will, which is the online contest. So a district could say, yes, we will hold our, we will hold our international speech contest, our evaluation contest, our table topics contest. And if they want to, the district council could say, we will also add an online contest. And that decision is taken by the council through the executive. What we did then was we took out a poll just to get the feeling of what the, what District 74, how District 74 feel about the contest that we have. Because at the moment, we have capacity to only, to run about three, to run three contests. And then we took it out, 103 people responded to that, to that poll. And of the 103 people, people still prefer for us to have these three contests, which is in our District 74 Code of Practice, which is the international speech contest, our evaluation contest, including our table topics contest. And we are here to announce that we will continue holding these contests in person. So in 2025, District 74 will be holding in-person contests from area, their area level, area contests, division contests, and district contests will be in person. And this contest will be on the 3rd of May. Please diarize it. It will be on the 3rd of May during the Maycon. We will be launching our Maycon in this style. In the coming weeks, we will be launching our Maycon. It will be around Houghton. We'll announce the dates of the conference and announce the dates of the, of the, the dates of the conference, and we'll also announce the venue of the contest. But for now, please put it in your diary. It will be in Houghton. It will be on the 3rd of May in 2025. 2025, the 3rd of May. I don't want to delve into talking about the conference, because this meeting is about the contest. And everything we're going to talk about here is the contest. Now, while we do this, we want to ensure that everyone feels the opportunity, takes the opportunity to be part of this, part of taking part in the contest and taking part in, and giving them an opportunity to contest or even play, take opportunities in playing leadership role in putting together the contest. Now, our chief judge will talk about those rules as I give over to him, while I'm going to give over to her shortly. But at this moment, I want to give you an opportunity to ask any question regarding your contest and how you can run your contest. And I will do my best to answer every other question. And if I am unable to answer, I will defer it. But rest assured that we will do our best to give you a answer in regarding the contest. And I will open for the questions. You may raise your hand. President Andrew Kendra. President, please, when you ask your question, just say, I'm Andrew Kendra, president of, and then you may ask the question.
Hello, I'm Andrew Kendra of Atlantic Break, Atlantic Toastmasters online thing. The question I've got, our members are international. And if we do a contest, would they be able to do the, if they had to go higher into the levels, would they be able to be in, do they have to be in person? Or is there a facility they can also be online at the district?
Fantastic. Did I get your, did I get your full question? You may continue.
Okay, the, the question is, if they go further, you say, club level will be online. Because all our members are in different towns, even different, not, we don't, not together. So if they had to go further, people are in India, say they had to win the, would they have to come to the thing? Or would there be a facility that they could do it online in the contest?
Great question. Thank you, President Andrew Kendra. And that is a great question. And I'm sure a lot of people find themselves in that situation, because in 2020, when we all went online, we started accepting members, which were outside our geographical area. And that was good for the club growth. That was good for connecting with other people outside of our country or outside of our provinces, even outside of our cities. However, a club can hold a contest whichever way they want to hold it. If they want to hold a contest online, Toastmasters, we cannot dictate that. However, at area level, if they want to contest, they will have to come to the, to where the contest is or where the contest is hosted. A club would have to find ways to get the people there. It's just like it was pre-COVID. Because pre-COVID, we used to hold our contest in person. And if you find that the contest is in your, your, your division contest is outside of your city, the club would usually maybe clap together and help their contestants get there. If the club has got those resources to get the person there, and that's, and that's what we would recommend that we do. I hope I've answered your question, President. And then President Bradford Dale.
Hi there, Mr. Mr. PQD. So hi, I'm Bradford from the Golden Gavel Advanced Club, an online club. So pardon me, my question is around, it is around what, what were the, what what kind of led to the decision of not including a category for online prepared speaking? So I agree, I am in full support of having the prepared speaking in person. That makes sense. I completely understand that. I'm just not sure about why they see, why we're excluding the online, online speaking category completely from a district level, because it almost feels like we're devaluing the skill that is required to present online, because it is, it is not, not either or. We could, we could theoretically have both, as it's not a dichotomy, and the skills are vastly different.
That's a beautiful question. And I do agree with you. There are lots of skills that we learn by engaging online or by having these online contests or by having just online speaking sessions. I mean, I for one have learnt a lot between, since we pivoted online and since we've had our, these conversations online. There is a lot we can learn there and we cannot devalue the, the skills that we learn there or the value that we get from presenting online. However, putting together a contest takes a lot of resources, especially from the area directors, which have, they've got other responsibilities. The area directors, the division directors and the cabinet, they've got other responsibilities. And we, we, we figured that if we host all the contests, like all four of them, that might take a lot of resource or that will take a lot of resources to handle all the contests and be able to deliver on other deliverables. So what we did is we advertised or we broadcast the poll on, on, through email, and 103 people voted on the poll and we checked how many people are interested in these contests. And the contests that were most popular was the evaluation contest, which had over 50% of people that won the evaluation contest and the the table topics contest, which also had a number of people that said they are interested. We've opened the poll again so that we are able to hear everyone. I will send it out again in the link and I would advise everyone to, to participate, because some of these polls, they help us to take these decisions. Because we want to hear from you. And if we, if the, we had more people that said they want the online contest, we could have dropped me the table topics or the, the, the evaluation contest, because some of these contests, it takes time. So just imagine if we were in a, in the, in the conference and we've got four contests. Now, now, the contest in itself is long. The, if you have put all three categories, it takes really long. And now, if you add in another contest, which makes it four, it makes it a rather long day. And we don't want to put that pressure on our, on the, on our members. So that's why we opted for three contests. And we, it was just a choice on which contest would be most viable or which contest do the people want. And the table topics contest and the evaluation contest came on tops. Having said that, we will, we have opened up that poll again, because we, we still have time. We want to hear from you. I'll post the link later in the, in the, in this meeting. And please help us to guide us in how, what District 74 wants. Madam IP, Madam PDD Nikki Queen. You are on mute.
Thank you, Mr. PQD. Just a regular vice president of membership of copper DM Toastmasters. Thank you so much. This is an incredible, incredibly educational for us. In the old days, prior to COVID, and maybe even a few years prior to that, we used to have two contest seasons. Once in where the contest was done in the first half of the year and once where the contests were done in the second half of the year. May I ask, at the moment, are all three contests going to be do, done during the second half of the year? So essentially, February to May or January to May?
And that is a great question. And that's one of the questions I asked. And that's one of the questions I dealt into when I took over the role of PQD, because I wanted to make sure that we are ready for this. In the District 74 Code of Practice, which was revised in 2022, this decision was taken that the district will host these three contests and it will be held for the second half of the year. I suppose at the moment, that's what the Code of Practice says. Maybe next year, during the council, we might decide that maybe let's help hold another event or another contest in the, during the first half of the year. But at the moment, yes, the District 74 District Contest, all contests will be held in the second half of the year.
Thank you so much, Mr. PQD. Really appreciate the answer.
Thank you. And President Lissadi, President NAD Lissadi.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So my question is more of the area contest that should be in person. So there's a club in Lesotho, in Blofelden, and in Joburg. And the other one is in Joburg, but most of the members are in Sekunda, so they meet online. So in terms of, you know, trying to plan it, I'm trying to plan it now and trying to find a central location for everyone. But for the clubs that will not make it to the area contest, do I then say that they can't participate or how do I actually approach that? Because they are actually willing to do their club contest, but the people that succeed from they have to come to the area contest. If they can't physically come, what happens then?
That is a great question. Thank you, President Lissadi. I'm not sure. I think that's an area director question, so I'm going to address it as an area director, Lissadi. And that is a great question. I, I, I love that you think of the people or you are thinking of the people that will be participating in the contest in your question. And as a district or as a district leader, an area director, in that, that, that sort of say, you cannot take the decision to say, you cannot participate in the contest. We are not allowed to do that as district leaders. We, in fact, we should encourage people to participate in the contest, because we know the value that the contest is. Now, having said that, obviously, there are logistical considerations that everybody needs to make when they participate in the contest. I think what, what needs to be done is to talk to the people and let the people understand where the contest is, contest is going to be. And I think it is very, it will be a responsible thing to do with your area council to decide where would be the best place to be that will be central for every part of the area to be able to attend the contest. Because if you think of it, let's say someone, let's say you, you, you hold your contest in Blofelden. And everyone then goes to Blofelden and someone in Blofelden actually wins the contest. That means if, when it comes to division, district contests, they would have to travel. Or if they make it the district contest, they would have to travel to the US. Now, if we put it to the clubs and we, and that's why we are announcing this, and so that the clubs can have, can be proactive in raising funds and making sure that if their contestants are going there, then we are able to, they're able to fund them. So in, in short, you cannot say people cannot contest. We need to open it for everyone. The, the area council can decide a central area that will be, that could be effective or that could be, that could be, that could work for every member of the area to attend it. And that would also give, that would also give an opportunity for the, your area to meet in person so that they get to know each other, so that they know that there are other Toastmasters outside their clubs. I hope I've answered your question, Area Director Lissadi. President Brenda Liss.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you very much. I appreciate the taking my question. So am I correct in saying, is the area competition not going to be part of Maycon? Or is it? If it isn't, you're going to have to get a big enough venue. If you get a big enough venue to do the area, I'm looking at the area situation now. Is it going to cost us to enter into the area? Because you're now going to have to pay for a venue. You know, the person has to get to the venue. So maybe you raise funds in a club. But isn't this just going to cost a lot more money to have it not online, but in person? And if, whatever competition, if you can just reiterate, which one's going to be at Maycon? Does the person that gets to that division or whatever that one is, do they now have to register for Maycon, be part of Maycon, and then got to find 6,000 rand to be part of Maycon to then get into the competition? So I'm just looking at it financially, statistically, one thing is getting there. If it's Joburg, that's, you know, neither here nor there. Although one of our members immigrated, we didn't recruit people into from overseas, but he immigrated. But anyway, my thing is, how is this going to affect the cost wise? Doing it in person, is it, you know, just that logistical thing? Because it's one thing getting there, but it's now, how do we afford the, everything that goes with that in the in-person one? Has anybody done a budget? Got some of that? It's a good idea to do a poll. But financially, put it down in an Excel spreadsheet, what this thing will cost? Because you'll have to feed your judges, feed your timekeepers, page a venue that can do it all. So it's just that, which one goes with Maycon? And how much is it going to cost above getting the person to the event? Or one or two or three people to the event? And has that been costed?
Great. Thank, thank you for that question, President Brenda. I think your question is multi-layered. Let me start by answering it this way. The contest is divided into, it starts at club level. So it's divided in, into a certain several levels. So whoever wins at club level will go to area level. Being at the prepared speech contest, evaluation contest, table topics contest, whoever wins there will go, will, will proceed to the area contest. And whoever wins at area level will proceed to the division contest. And whoever wins a division contest will proceed to go to the district contest, which will be held during the conference. I think that's the first part of your question. So it is all this, these levels. So whoever wins at present, at, at club level will go to the area level. Whoever wins there will go to the next level, which is division level. Whoever wins at division level will go contest at district level. And by the way, whoever wins at district level, they get to be adjudicated by a number of judges to say if they are adjudicated at, at, at the regional level. And if they win there, then they proceed to the international level. I mean, in 2021, one of Verity Prize won the international public speaking, world champion public speaking, and she went through that process. By the way, at that time, we were still online. So that's the first part of your question. And I think we've covered it very well. So let's go back to the logistical part of your question, which includes the, the, the budget part of it. So we did sit down with our finance manager to see how we can help areas to achieve this. And yes, we have budgeted for it. But as you may think about it, we've got about 30 areas plus seven divisions, plus obviously the district itself. That means in total, the district had to budget for 38 contests. Now, you and I know that if we had, if the district had to really put money for all 38 of them, which we are, but obviously, it's not going to be an, 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 an amount of money that covers everything. That would be a substantial amount of money. So we have spoken to our area directors and the, our, our, our finance manager, actually advisor, area directors, to say, let's start raising funds and let the clubs come together and pitch together to run successful, effective and quality contests. So while the district may have some money to put down, it won't be able to cover everything. We might cover a little portion, but most of, most of it will have to, the clubs will have to clap together to come up with some, some of the things. Now, maybe our, our, our club group director will appreciate me saying this at this moment, that the money that we get until, from Toastmasters and the money that we use to finance some of these things actually come from getting new members in and getting clubs verified complete and getting clubs to be verified complete and getting clubs to grow and getting our new clubs. So when we do that, Toastmasters takes a certain portion and brings it back to us for us to be able to fund some of these projects. So this is an, an opportunity or this is an encouragement to say, if your club is not verified complete, or if you know the club does not verify complete, if you help them get verified complete, then the district will make enough money to be able to support some of these initiatives. At the moment, Toastmasters District 74, we've got 115 clubs. And at the moment, only 76 clubs are verified complete and with one new club. So if we get more clubs and we get new members and we, we make sure that our clubs grow, then that way, we, we will have maybe a substantial amount to be able to put. So to answer in short, yes, the district has considered that. We've put it in our budget and we will make, find ways to try to fund some of these initiatives. But obviously, we encourage areas to, and clubs to come together, raise funds and host these contests. By the way, you can make people, people, I remember the first contest I attended. In fact, the contest, the first contest I attended in which I got converted before I was a member, I think I had to pay an entrance fee. So you are allowed to charge people an entrance fee to attend a contest so that you can be able to cover the cost of the contest. So some, these are some of the ways in which you can run to ensure that your contest runs smoothly. I am running out of time. I need to give over to our district chief judge, but I'm going to answer one question. I'm not sure who was the first one to raise their hand. Leah, who was the first one to raise their hand?
It, it was Shaun.
Okay. Prayer is a division. Sure, you may please ask your question.
Hi, good evening. I want to know, we do have some area directors who live outside the country. So how are they going to hold their contests?
Ah, that's a great question. And Shaun, we are in, in, in touch with the area directors and we will work with them to guide them to ensure that they run their area, their area contest smoothly. We will do a training, especially for the area directors. Our chief judge will be announcing some of the trainings that we will be having. And we will have a training where we train our chief judges how to run contests. And obviously, I think we do have about two or three area directors, which are outside their country and, or some of them are outside the cities where they are area director. And obviously, this has been taken into consideration. And we will do training to ensure that that runs smoothly. Thank you for that question.
Sorry, can I just tell a follow-up question then?
Okay.
Can the judges be remote? Like she have a Harvard meeting? That's, that's just my question. I'm finished. Thanks.
That, that is a good question. And we haven't explored that. We would have to look at the rule book on that and to see what it says. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm answering from memory now. I'm not answering from the rule book. As far as I'm concerned, everyone that is participating and taking part in the contest must be in the contest rule. That is a great question. Let me read the rule book on that, just to ensure that I've answered it correctly. If I don't come back to you on that, you must know that this answer was correct. But if I, if I find that it's the contrary, I will definitely let you know. Thank you for that question. And now, ladies and gentlemen, I am available. My number is 0662347806. Uh my number is zero six six two three four seven eight zero six, zero six six two three four seven eight zero six. My email address is p q d at toastmasterseventyfour dot O R G. P Q D at toastmasterseventyfour dot O R G. You may continue asking your question. I will be able to engage you to make sure that you run your contest successfully. Our chief judge will also announce her uh contact details and we will make sure that we how, I don't know what it is, we all have your name, will make sure that we help you and support you to run quality contests. In the spirit of creating a culture of care, we want to ensure that this is also shown through our contest. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome on stage our District Seventy Four Chief Judge, Yangang Kumenge, who will take us through some contest rule books. And she will also talk about some of the trainings that we will have.
Thank you, P Q D, Begisisa. Am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Thank you so, so very much. Thank you for those explanations and thank you for your questions. Aside, I won't be going in details in terms of the rule book itself. But I just want to speak in terms of preparation to say that there are, uh there is a rule book in Toastmasters where you can find it under the resources. That's where I would advise the clubs to go and find those rule books. You can try and acquaint yourself with the rules uh as early as possible so that you can prepare yourselves as a club. I would also ask you to please make sure that you do have a team that will run and help you run the contest. And of course, you have to prepare your members to participate in the contest. My other thing that I wanted to share with you is the eligibility. It is very important that we make sure as clubs that we are paid up, meaning that we are club verified, meaning the eight minimum members are paid up. And also those contestants who are contesting are paid up as well. Another thing that I would want to ensure that you guys are prepared on is to start your contest on time. I think you are allowed to start as early as November or December just to ensure that you have the time to prepare your contestants. Otherwise, your January, February, March, I think it starts being the area contest. So that is something to think about for the XCO, the area and also the division. I would also ask the clubs to really prepare themselves, maybe run the clubs as if to prepare for the contest. I think it is very uh um important that when we run the clubs, it helps the contestants to prepare for the contest. Because at times, we find that there are, there are some club are very relaxed and therefore the rules are not maintained in the contest. My other point that I wanted to, to, to emphasize are the roles. There's a quite a number of roles that are required in the contest, like your chief judge, your contest chair, the number of judges that there are there, the timers, the ballots and the contested themselves. So you really need to lobby a lot of people to help you run this contest. Hence, we need to be prepared very early within the, as soon as possible so that by the time we run those contests, we are uh planned well and we are also prepared. In terms of division directors, uh division directors will be the chief judges if they cannot find uh people to help within their division. So we did create a, a club, a group on WhatsApp for the division directors to join that group. And then they can help us run the contest, educate the clubs. And that sort, if you haven't been in that group, please ensure that or Begisisa so that add you in that group. Are the dates of the area, division and district contest? The dates, the dates will be announced in terms of um the division. The division directors will drive that so that we are all aligned. Each division director will speak to the area and the areas will speak to the club so that everybody by a certain time, they have finished their club, their club contest. And by the time the division needs to come in, all area contest must have been concluded. That will be communicated. I think the only thing is just to stress the eligibility and preparedness of those contests. Making sure that we are eligible as clubs and members to compete in the contest. And also, secondly, the preparedness of the contest is very important. Lastly, we also need to have assistant as the chief judge to ensure that we run workshops and contest themselves very smoothly and well. Now, the next point from my side is the workshops. We will be running workshops. Uh we'll have three for this year. And then I think we'll have another three or two for the coming year, which is twenty twenty five. The, for this year, we'll have the first workshop on the twenty The second workshop will be on the eleventh of November. And the last for the year will be on the twenty fifth of November. Those details will be communicated with everybody. Please ensure that you attend and you prepare all your questions and you come and we help each other and educate one another. From my side, I think that is all to save on time as well. I can open for questions. I think Sean, is that a legacy hand?
Sorry, I'll write, I'll write my hand.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions on my side, I would like to post a link for a form that you can fill in to be, yes, Madam Chief Judge. There's a, I see a question in the chat. It's saying, are the dates for the area level division and contest and district contest out? Yes, I did answer the question and I said that they are not out yet. That will be under the division director. The division director is responsible to um, to communicate and also work with the areas and the clubs to ensure that they release the dates. They prepare for the date so that they don't have any clashing and they are able to work together.
I think that also asking you to repeat the dates for the, 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 the training.
Thank you. The workshops will be on the twenty eighth of October this month. So it will be on the last Monday of the month. And then it will be on the eleventh of November, the twenty fifth of November. We've chosen Mondays, which are today at half past six. I think that should work for everybody, for us to uh um do the workshops. I have posted the link in terms of the forms, those who are available to help with administration, coordination with the chief judge will really greatly appreciate your help as we run the contest. Other than that, we will address all the rules, everything that is required and needed for the contest to be run smoothly and well from the twenty eighth of October this month. From my side, Mr. P Q D, I am done. Back to you. Thank you. Mr. Begisisa? You are still muted.
Sorry about that, Madam Chief Judge, my.
I'm not too sure if it's on my side, but Becky seems to be frozen.
Yes, he is also on my side.
Oh, okay.
Yes, also on my side. He's frozen.
I think I'll just step in at this point, seeing as Mr. P Q D seems to be frozen. Um and really, I suppose what he would have wanted to say at this point is to really thank you uh for making the time. And uh we will have the training sessions uh as listed in the chat. Um and uh really what remains is to thank you for making the time. And uh let's make this a successful uh contest season uh that is uh before us. Um I don't know if Madam Contest Chair, if you had anything else?
Is that Chief Judge? No, no, thank you.
Madam Chief Judge, that's what happens when you get thrown into table topics.
Thank you, Mr. Club Group Director, for handling that very well. I gave you an opportunity to slip in to say, hey, by the way, to participate in the contest, you need to renew your membership. And by the way, if you want your club to participate in the contest, they need to be verified complete. Sorry about that. Um that would be it for today. But let's continue the conversation. Let's continue the conversation on our WhatsApp lines. Let's continue the conversation. You may uh call me directly or send me a WhatsApp text directly. I'll be happy to engage with you uh and to hear some of your ideas as well. I'll be happy to engage with you on email as well. Uh we've got an open office policy for now. And then we want to hear from you and want to make sure that we run successful contests. But because we know that if we run quality contests, this is another way we can grow our clubs. Wishing you a fantastic and productive week ahead. Goodbye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. God bless.